Alrighty, welcome everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, it's a pleasure to see you all. And once again, yeah, so before we kick things off here, just a reminder that this, these town halls are recorded and will be made available for playback on the hospitable YouTube channel and you can also listen to the replays here in the Clubhouse app. We'll get started with some company updates and let you know what's going on within the business and then we'll go on to the Q and A session. So when the time comes, raise your hand through the app and we'll invite you up on stage to ask your questions. Please remember to meet yourself when you're on stage and aren't speaking as a courtesy for other people. And if you aren't comfortable coming up on stage or you don't want to be recorded, you can ask your questions via the chat function where Zach will be helping take those down and we'll escalate them in the Q and A sessions up on stage. So without further ado, over to Pierre with the company updates.
Yes, and if you are joining us on stage, please make sure to unmute yourself, which based on Leicester and always really the most complicated experience and honestly I cannot understand that, that's why I'm using Clubhouse today. Button on the bottom right, but I will be clarifying that. I'm today joined by basically a special guest, my little daughter Clara, I'm on baby duty right now, which is obviously a pleasure. So if you, if I'm a bit slow to unmute myself, that's probably because I'm sparing you some, some baby with basically queuing, tweeting as she's doing right now and starting to vocalize a little bit. And so I'm going to start with some people updates. So if you are basically following this annual, you know that basically we've recruited quite a lot of people, 10 people who have started with us during the month of October so far and we are not stopping there. Three more people will join our team in the following weeks, starting by Samir, who will be joining us from Amsterdam in the Netherlands. We'll join our team as a software engineer working specifically with our core and connectivity teams. So core and connectivity is basically everything that you see on a product right now with the exception of direct. Basically require a lot of developers to not only keep it working, but also continue developing small features like for example, you know, notifying you or making sure that we have a consent when you notify on a Clubhouse standall, for example. Joe is, will be joining us also as a principal software engineer later in November. He's just signed his contract just today and he will join hospitable as a principal software engineer. And that's really, yeah, that's going to be the first time we have a software engineer based in the US. So that's obviously would be, I'm very excited about it to, to be honest, basically expanding beyond the current company and engineering team boulders within the Europe and Africa. And last but not least, Miles has been picked to join as a future, as a future head of marketing. He's going to be based in Toronto in Canada and I think he's basically going to be running and taking over those standall events. That's where obviously it would be my pleasure and obviously we're going to make a lot more effort to be more marketing driven, so educating our customers, that's customer marketing and basically taking, yeah, basically running a company in the best way, but at the same time really advocating for the usage products that we have, that our customers know success with. So we're excited to have all three of them joining our team that will bring our current team of 31 to 34 on the 14th of November. So that's just 70% more than what we were on 1st of August. And we're still recruiting for one last position. We continue to recruit for a director of support roles of someone that basically would be owning the entire support organization for a very senior individual with a lot of experience running support teams. Which currently for a company at hospitable represent 12 people. So yeah, we're basically going with Jen, Zach through those assessment stage for a few candidates. And yeah, we decided however to stop, to stop, to pause our recruiting for head of sales. It's been a challenging recruitment campaign to find someone who will be able to own the sales function for our sales team and still be a fit with our culture. That's not something that we want to negotiate with. It also seems like really the most talented head of sales really go out fast, they find a job very fast. And basically for us, that was quite challenging to meet even though we are recruiting quite fast, I find. But now here, that was really too challenging for us. We had decided to put this recruitment on pause, on pause. So that we can focus on spending more time on the onboarding of our upcoming director of marketing, director of support and head of marketing with Miles and obviously we're going to need to recruit head of sales at a given time. Right now they're just no longer a company priority. I just wanted to share, just, I like to share a few numbers. I just wanted to, that have basically been, so a few numbers that I've been calculating in the past few, past few days. So I don't know if you really, I didn't realize that. So it's kind of not going to tell you anything. But if we stop growing today, if hospitable didn't have any more new customers and you were not changing anything on your messaging rules, we'll be sending 10 million, more than 10 million messages in the next 12, in the next 12 months. And if we start accounting for growth, I think my best bet would be that we probably will be sending around 17 to 18 million messages in the next 12 months. Basically that means 30 or so message every, every minute. Still a long way to go. And yeah, nearly 10, I know that basically we're hearing a lot, obviously about launch of direct and payment processing coming with it. Undoubtedly going to keep talking about it today. But I just wanted to share again that we have still today 10,000 properties that are currently live on the direct booking website to present basically around, around 25% of all properties that are available or invoiced really on hospitable. The story, 42,000 properties have been invoiced. So it's 64,000. Basically our properties are available, so for bookings today. So see again, a bit of a long way to go. In terms of revenue growth, we just today passed 4.3 million dollars annual run rate. So that's actually worked according to that same hypothesis that if we stop growing today, we basically, our business will still be generating 4.3 million dollars in revenue. And we also passed 8,600 customers very recently. So that's, that's basically what I had, a bit of a few metrics for you, so that you can follow along on our progress. Now, obviously it is conference season. You have heard a lot about the events that we are sponsoring, hopefully so. So we are attending VRMA and basically we are all kind of prepping for this event right now. So I'm currently in Brussels, but yeah, Friday morning I'm leaving for Las Vegas to join for the VRMA international conference. So make sure to come check us out. If you are, if you are going to be joining us at Las Vegas in the VRMA international conference, so join us at booth 231, 231, where our team will be giving demos and showing off some exciting things that we have been working on throughout the past month. And we'll also be giving out some exclusive swag and invitation for hospitable VIP events. So if you're there, please stop by our booth, say hello and we basically make sure that you are covered for the, for your t-shirt collection. Also in the marketing updates, we're going to have a next hospitable masterclass coming up on the 3rd of November. There's a fantastic person, Tony J Robinson. He will be sharing his experience and tips on how to analyze investment opportunities to establish long-term partnerships, drive some investments for into your properties and much more. So keep an eye out on your email, on your email for invites coming soon and make sure to register and join us. And yeah, we're joined today by Jen to share some of our support updates, which are also going to be touching on this little event that we're having in Las Vegas. Jen?
Well, thanks Pierre. Yeah, just little event, VRMA. So I have two updates today. The first is that about half of the support team is actually going to be attending VRMA in Las Vegas. And while we're there, we're also going to be spending some time together in person, really thinking about how we can improve our support overall. And we know that great things happen when you've got a lot of different ideas and minds on a problem. So we're really looking forward to that. Especially when those minds are the ones talking to our customers every day and trying to truly understand where you're coming from and what you need. So excited about that. But definitely make sure to be patient with us next week. We're going to have more limited support because half our team is going to be away. Most will be there for you, but just, you know, be patient with us while it's going to take a little longer to get back. And then the second update I have is really around our help content. We know we've got a lot of like amazing articles, videos, tutorials, even some troubleshooting guides that are in our help center. But we realize it can sometimes be hidden or it can be cumbersome to find or understand. So Mike on our team has a lot of great experience building out and maintaining like really good robust help content. And so we're excited that he's going to tackle the beast for us or, or the beauty that is our help center. It's definitely going to be a longer term project, but we're really excited about it so that we can help make all that great content we already have easier to find and ultimately get you what you need quicker and in the moment that you need it, as well as continuing to build that new content. So what I'd ask for, for you guys, everyone joining today, is we'd love to know, what do you think of our content? Where are there some topics that you want to see us cover more of? Are there styles or like types of content that work better for you? Maybe that's, hey, I want to see more videos or I'd love to see more step-by-step guides. Yeah, tell us in the chat in Clubhouse if what would you like to see, what's working well, what's not, what do you want? I'd love to take all of that to the man himself, take it to Mike so he can run with it and help us build much better content. Alright, those are my two updates for today. So I will actually pass you off to Ben to talk about our product.
Yo yo, thanks Jen, thanks for that. Okay, cool. Let's, let's, let me start again. Let's kick off this week with smart locks. If you joined us on the last town hall, you might remember that we announced a pilot for a native integration with August and Yale locks. Good news, that pilot is now up and running. We've got around 50 locks connected. We're generating codes, we're getting guests into properties and we're going to be expanding that in the coming weeks. And literally hot off the press, in the last hour, we've also completed our certification process with remote lock. So that's also currently in a, in a private pilot, around 25 users in there at the moment, 70 locks connected. Keep your eyes peeled for both of those in the coming weeks as we start to roll those out and make those available to, to more customers. What have we shipped to production in the last couple of weeks? We've added a payment breakdown to the reservation details for direct bookings. So previously if you went into a conversation or on your calendar, you clicked on that reservation details button, you could see payment breakdowns for channel bookings, but not for direct bookings. That's no longer the case, you'll see it for direct bookings as well now. On the last town hall, we also shared some sample CSV files. Andrew shared some sample CSV files with you for a tax report that's going to live in metrics. So the first report we've added to metrics for a while. Thank you so much for your feedback on those. We're hoping to have this report ready and showing up in metrics by the end of this week. So yeah, you can, you can hold me to that. We've also shipped a bunch of smaller tweaks and fixes in the last couple of weeks as well. We've sort of been onboarding some engineers. And whilst we've been doing that, we've kind of focused on, on some of the smaller, but, but no less important tweaks and fixes. So the full details of this will be in a change log that's coming soon. But you may have already seen some improvements in the hospitable app to the manual booking form, connected account screen. We've also improved readability of timestamps in a conversation. They were way too small, way too super, super light gray. And so yeah, we've improved the readability on that, the first sort of drop in the ocean to, to some general accessibility and readability improvements we'd like to do. We're supporting rolling availability now for Airbnb. So a bunch of, a bunch of tweaks and updates that have gone in. And Kostin, one of our product engineers, has also shipped some improvements today on how we handle declined or expired inquiries on Airbnb. So if you've been looking in your inbox, you've been seeing those inquiries piling up. We weren't detecting that those had declined, been declined or expired. We are now, they're all going to start to show up correctly in, in the product. So yeah, tons of smaller tweaks and fixes. And as to what's coming next, as I mentioned, we've been onboarding four new engineers. And good news is they're all onboarded now. They all passed their product tests that we have. So they're ready to, to start making a difference, cutting some code and improving the product. Glenn, who's been working with me on the front end, hey Glenn, see you in the audience. He's been spending some time on an awesome looking hospitable Chrome extension to help simplify the booking.com connection flow and potentially more. So that's, that's in the pipe. That's something we're actively looking into. I've been spending a bit of time on global search in the product. We've kind of dabbled in this a little bit. We talked about searching by guest phone number. We thought, why stop there? Let's go a little bit further. Let's make everything searchable as much as we can. So this is very much a work in progress, but it ties into some of the stuff Jen was talking about, about discoverability of help articles. So if you're searching for something related to lead listing, we want to have one search bar in the app, which kind of shows you any help articles, any messages you've had from guests, any guests themselves, if you want to search on a guest phone number, an email, any messaging rules, any tasks. We're looking to put all of this in one place that you can go to, search what you want and we're going to try and give it to you. So super excited about that one. On mobile, thank you so much for sharing your feedback with us. We had 150 responses from you guys on how you're using mobile, how you think we can improve mobile going forward. Incredible responses. We're diving into that feedback now and we're looking to line up an agency to help us kind of improve what we think mobile should look like going forward with, with your input and those, those great responses. And finally to end up, direct, direct booking websites. Still very much ongoing. There's a lot of stuff happening in the background as we're, we're working towards a launch. The 10 new direct booking website designs that we've shared with you previously. These are kind of themed, if you haven't seen these, these are themed direct booking templates that you'll be able to apply to your site. So you have a lot more options in terms of making your site personalized and making it stand out. Those are being actively worked on now. So we've got 10 new templates coming sometime soon. And we're also looking to make some improvements to the, the sort of backend of direct, so your site builder, you know, and all the bits and pieces that go around there as well. As I mentioned, we're onboarding engineers. Some of those are going to be working in direct. So our pace is only going to accelerate from here. And I think that's it from product this week.
Okay, so yeah, moving the, some traction still on smart locks. So you were saying weeks, I'm going to work to make sure that days, I think right now for August, we are, I think we are, we're good to go and, and more with the product manager owning that particular part of a product is going to open this to more people. So we're going to be able to test the integration with, for example, properties with more than, accounts with more than 10 devices. And we just have a basically a bit of hiccup with Yale. Yale smart locks just basically doesn't work quite correctly, even though August and Yale seem to be actually the same integration from an API perspective. So yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna share more updates soon. And I am very excited about the Chrome extension so that we can facilitate really the experience for connecting on booking.com. Okay. So yeah, let's go with the Q and A now. So we can, if you want to ask a question, we can appear on stage. Yeah, Daniel?
Yep, currently don't have anyone raising hands yet. Maybe before that, I'll just pick up a question here from the chat. Mac was wondering how he can become a better user for?
I think we were talking about, I don't know, we have a lot of those things, maybe smart locks that maybe for direct. So Mark, if you want, you don't, you have no reason to be shy today. You can really raise your hand and basically start chatting about what you would like to, as to be helping you with. Oh, say something in the chat.
Also, don't be shy if anyone else has a question, feel free to. Okay, we currently have another question from Mike. So if we have an update on auto-host being available to non-auto-host direct customers?
That's very good terminology. Mac Turner, I find he's really odd because there is wrong CEO over those on that, on that, on that tunnel itself. So I don't know, I'm going to invite him to speak. So that basically we can understand a little bit more into the, into the problem. As for us, I would like to say that we are very interested. Especially because we're going to need to build a very stellar integration iteration with our direct booking websites in the, in the first place. And so that's going to cover you for your direct bookings. But obviously a lot of our customers, when they start realizing what they're missing out in terms of opportunity for verifying that guest, we want to expand that to other channels, whether we're talking Airbnb, Verbo or especially booking.com, which is often having a bad reputation with, with hosts. So we, we are looking into that and I cannot give you any kind of timeline or any kind of commitments. I know that's something that was shared earlier and I think we were kind of, we reached out to the auto host team on basically finding out what happens. We do currently have an integration if you are an auto host customer, which is kind of a problematic part here, because you're only, you're going to auto host currently as, if I don't want to misrepresent anything on the toast side, but it's basically going to require that you have a certain number of listings so that they can basically dedicate resources on that side to make sure that you're going to be very nicely onboarded, which I trust you will be. But basically that creates, I think for everyone really, a bit of frustration. Roy, is there a frustration on basically not being able to onboard, you know, every host on auto host? They should be able to, to, everyone should be able to be a auto host customer, no? Roy, you can unmute yourself if you want. The mic button, bottom right. If you, if you can. Maybe, maybe not. So we have Mike, Mike with, with driving.
Yes, he's asking about Zapier. So any favorite Zaps and Auto, oh, Mac Owen has something to say. Let's invite him up now. Royal, I'll put you down back into the audience for a sec and then we can get you back up afterwards.
We can keep Roy, if you're basically, because we're going to talk about autos, that's literally his company. So I would very much appreciate if we can, if we can have that happen. Mike, can you unmute yourself? Can you, can we hear you?
Yeah, let Roy go if he's up there. Is Roy, is Roy?
Roy's more important to me. That's not true. I've never seen anyone not important. But, but yeah, I, I think so to continue on what I was saying is basically, I think there is a lot of frustration on the toast side, but also on the, on the prospective customer side that would like to use autos. And I could definitely understand why. It's fantastic product that really is able to go above and beyond on their purpose of helping you make hosting use days in a, in a safer way. And we would really like to see that accomplished. I know we've talked about this privately with, with Andrew, who's basically working on direct, on a direct integration, on the direct product. So that we can also, in the context of developing our own thing, adding basically an integration as a reseller, where you'll be able to purchase your auto subscription basically through us and we'll basically expose all the configuration for you with as minimal of an onboarding as possible. So I don't think Roy ever heard that from us, but obviously we are considering that because we'd love to help put autos into more host hands. But yeah, the timeline for that is a bit far-fetched. You can appreciate for us, the priority is really all about payment processing. It's allowing you to, for all those 10,000 properties that have a direct booking website to process the payments from their guests. Autos is going to be a part of that. But that's probably that, that time that we're talking about, but allowing auto host, non-native auto host customers, that's really the expression. That's going to be something that's going to be happening after. But hey, we are recruiting engineers left and right, so we don't know what we're going to be capable of after. Yeah, my daughter is imploding me secretly. I don't know if she can hear that. She's really wicked. Mac, is that okay with you? Maybe, how many, how many listings do you have, Mac?
Um, right now, 40, almost. I think I could have 15, depending on a few other contracts that I'm trying to get assigned.
Roy, you're missing out. Roy, you're missing out. You should have Mac as a customer.
I am a customer.
Oh, you are a customer?
I, I, I use auto host. Yeah, I've been using auto host for like a year now. I love auto host. It's, it's great. Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, yes, you're Mac. Sorry, there's Mac and Mike. Sorry, that's, that's, that's where I was, I was bugging. Mike? Sorry, I was, I was getting confused. Yeah, somebody should have told me that. So yeah, I was, Mike is the one that I was asking about autos being available to non-auto's direct customers. And Mac, you are the one that wanted to ask if it's possible to include you as a beta user, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And I've been driving, so I'm sorry. It's kind of my fault.
No problem. No problem. That is absolutely not your fault. It's me. And I think Mike is now on the phone call. So yeah, Mac, you wanted to be joining as a beta? Which beta in particular?
I've just seen it on your web, your website that you, you do have beta features that I, I was just hoping to, to see some more and to, to, to ask like on Clubhouse if you'd invite me for future, future beta, like whatever you guys are working on. I don't know if that's possible. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I mean, there, there are different things, the different levels of experimentation that we're having with our, with our customers. Beta is actually very, very easy. It's very easy to enter a kind of beta development. You just need to go into settings and then account preferences and then you just click, you just go on the enable experimental beta features. And that's basically something that's about, out of 8,000 customers, I think about 3,000 customers are actually experiencing a product as under a beta. So basically with a little few tweaks or basically earlier tweaks whenever we want to test something there. Whenever, because however that is a lot of people, we can't kind of be completely, really have all the experiments are running on it. So we basically have those private pilots that are basically have much more control. In your case, they are invite only. And so the ones currently having today, they're really, to recap, that's really for directs. We do have basically a certain segment of our product, which is allowing already payment processing, but requires you to connect to Stripe account and it is relatively going to, it's going to be quite, I want to say, yeah, quite low on services in that you will need, you, if you need to be a notice customer, if you want to have guest verification, we currently, it's not completely implemented just there, but it can be depending on other development on direct. But we are processing payments and I think Ben is the one following that a little bit closer to home. And we are also having those two additional private pilots, which is for innovation with smart locks, one for remote lock and another one for, for August and Yale, some direct connection for, for their, for their smart locks. So there are a few things depending on, we're always quite reluctant to have larger property managers to experiment on those simply because if there's something wrong, the impact is literally in hours on your, on your very busy day already. So and we basically are prioritizing property owners for those, those kind of experiments. But, but yeah, I think right now, for example, for August integration in particular, we are looking at expanding it to, to larger customers and finding to larger property managers, finding out if anything breaks with a number of devices that are supported on an individual account. And yeah, so honestly, Mac, if you want to join any of those, I think the best way to work would be to, to have that shared on support or simply having Ben and Zach reaching out to you.
Yes, please. Yeah, Mac, I can, I can definitely reach out to you, Mac. But I would definitely encourage you to head into settings, preferences, as Pierre mentioned, and then there's a toggle in there for the beta features. That's not going to give you much at the moment. It gives you the ability right now to add iCal feeds to let us know what iCal feeds you'd be interested in us adding to the future, to the product in the future. But other things are going to be starting to roll into that general beta flag, hopefully pretty soon. Like that global search that I was talking about, which you, you might be interested in. And then, yeah, we'll reach out to you as well about some of those pilot groups and see if you'd be a good fit and interested in any of those as well. So I'll reach out to you on Intercom and yeah, just keep an eye out.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you guys.
Okay. Alrighty, okay. Thank you, Mac. Now we have Mike that's going to come up on stage. I'll put you back in the audience. There we go. And now invite Mike up to speak. Apologies about the slight miscommunication there.
It's all my bad. Very sorry for that. Yeah. Hello, Mike. How can we help you? It seems like you have plenty of questions.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, sorry. So I'm quite a new hospitable customer and loving the app. I've tried lots of different, lots of different web apps before choosing hospitable. And it's by far the easiest to use and it's in what I call plain English because it just works. The one thing that I think is, is missing compared with a lot of others that I was testing is the, is, is we're seeing a lot in the UK. I don't know if this is the same kind of worldwide. But what we're seeing is, is that when somebody books, they automatically get a, a But what we're seeing is, is that when somebody books, they automatically get a, a link. Where they have to fill in their check-in information, they've got to confirm when they're going to check in. You've got the option of collecting things like a security deposit, ID. You may also have some kind of contract that gets signed. And then you've also, some of the other ones that I'm seeing now are starting to have upselling. So if there's like an orphan night, you know, the night before their stay or after their stay is available. Perhaps the system automatically offers it to them as a discount. Also upselling an early check-in, you know, if they want to check in a couple of hours before. You know, it, it does that, but it might charge them twenty or thirty dollars or pounds. Automatically updates the remote lock or the smart lock to, to do that. And all of that is kind of becoming something that I think is, is a, is a feature that would be highly desirable in hospitable. And I just wondered what your thoughts were on that, and if that's something that you guys had, had looked at potentially. Obviously, there's lots of APIs that do the identity check-in now, I know Stripe do a really good one. And they also can do security deposits, they can hold money and so on. I just wondered if your engineering team might be, be willing to start looking at something like that.
Uh, I'm going to let Jen answer on the, on the upselling part, because I know she can have a few tricks up her sleeve that may help you there. Actually, that's exactly the same conversation that we've been talking about, because all the things that you're asking. Are really done extremely well, in my view, by Autohost. Roy is on stage, he's still not talking, but he's the CEO of Autohost, I hope he listens. But that's exactly what, what Autohost is about, is really you upload, the guest is presented with a link. They upload their ID, verification ID. They are basically checked on their location or their IP address, or maybe their credit card details. So there, there are basically a lot of multi-factor to basically determine. The verification of a guest, including the signature of a rental agreement, which they're, they are doing within, within their product. So to talk about, about integration of Autohost is really about opening up that kind of, that kind of solution for, for our customers.
And just to add, you know, I'd love to use Autohost, but I currently only have eight units. Autohost have a minimum of twenty-five. So it's just, you know, they're not going to let me be a customer of theirs, so. I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't seem to work for me, unless you guys are able to persuade Autohost to talk to us smaller guys.
Or to be like what we're talking about, really operating as, as resellers, basically you are. You can purchase your Autohost subscription directly from within, from within hospitable. So it comes also pre-configured and you don't have to, we can, we can really simplify the experience for you as well. So that's really is kind of what we're, we're talking about, yeah.
That'd be great, if you could have that done in the next five minutes, that'd be amazing.
Yeah, sure, fine, absolutely.
Yeah, and then to add on, yeah, the, the feature about being able to kind of offer special discounts or timing. If you use our custom codes, that's where you can create any sort of message you want in that custom code. Like, hey, I'd love to offer you, you know, a ten percent discount if you, or, you know, charge you. This fee if you want to check in early. And you can put a condition on that code that says to only include that code if the night before is available, or if the night after is available. Meaning you're not going to have another guest who is going to be checking out. You can then include that code in some messaging rules you already have, or create new messaging rules that just use that code. And that way we would only include that message if that condition is true or not. We do have a whole help article, and I believe even a video on this, within our help center. So another reason why we want to redo our help center and make this content just much more findable for you.
Thanks, that sounds really good. If, if you're able to send me a copy of that help guide, I can give it a play and see, see how best to make it work, thank you. Just to add, will that, would that integrate with the smart lock? So if somebody did want to check in early, you know, I don't know how this would work, but we, we include a, a link for them to pay. To check in early. Is there a way of then making that automatically update the smart lock to say, right, this guest is now able to check in, I don't know, at 2:00 PM instead of 4:00 PM? Or is that a bit advanced at this stage?
Yeah, so that would be you going in, just changing the check-in time in the conversation hospitable. If you were to, you know, if it was previously 4:00 PM, you can change it to 2:00 PM. And that would change everything related to that, so it would change the smart lock code to start earlier. It would change all of your messaging rules that are based on check-in time. So it's that, you know, you just going in telling us it's been changed, and then everything around that would be automated.
I'm just wondering whether, does your API have anything to do with check-in times? So I'm wondering whether, I, I come from a software developer background, so. I'm just wondering if we built a page that collected payment and then used your API to push. Notification that the check-in time needed to change for that particular guest, that booking ID, would that work?
Yeah, I will be taking over from there, but unfortunately not. And that's a really good use scenario that you're, that you're highlighting here, Mike. Unfortunately, that's not been the case just yet. We have been going through internally through a big refactor, I can use the word. Of our, of our public API right now, so that developers can actually work on it. So far that was really impossible to do, or very challenging, I think Ben would agree here. And basically, we, I think, yeah, moving forward with a lot more engineers in our team, which is basically doubling in size, actually tripling in size. We're going to be able to definitely, the idea is, you know, unlock more, more, more usage for our public API. So being able to update reservations, being able to create some end updates, yeah, attributes like the check-in or checkout time. Ultimately, Mike, we all tell you the line. I think an upsell like this one is really tied with the progress that we're making on direct. Because it's basically all about processing money in relation with a reservation. And I think we are, we are going to be, I, I, I want us to be able to generate that link. Having the, the payment processed within hospitable, so the same product that you're going to be using to, to process your direct bookings. Paying you out and basically updating obviously your calendar in real time. For different packages and upsell services that you, that you want to offer, that's something very popular in the industry, and I think very. Once we're out of the MVP for payment processing, we are going to be experts deciding really on what, what's the next, what's the next big step. So including, you know, those integrations of Autohost and other things. But yeah, but this time will be a team of fifty million developers. I don't know, but it's going to be a lot more people needed anyway. So, yeah, Mike?
Cool, thank, no, I'm still here, thank you very much. And yeah, if there's anything that I can do to help in terms of Autohost beta testing, just give me a shout, because I'd love to use it sooner rather than later, thank you.
Just to give you an update, Mike, I, I will send that article on how to upsell in the chat in a sec. So you can, you can have that for you, and there's a video also with it, so I'll, I'll send my other chat in a sec. And thank you for your questions. Nikita actually wants to come up stage now, so I will put you back in the audience for now. And invite Nikita up on stage. There we go.
Yo.
There's royalty on stage right now.
Your majesty.
I just came on to say hi, honestly, I, I don't want to take up anyone else's time, but it's been a while, hello everyone.
Seriously, does anyone have a question? Come on, what are you doing, mate, mate?
Mate, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing well, doing well. After the discussion of, about the hospitable API, I had to smile and, and join.
Your ears started burning.
When you know, you know. It's all refactor now, it's all going to be on the monolith, it's basically Sam has an amazing job at it. With, with an external team of developers. So yeah. Literally now.
As you said, Sam, Sam joined as a listener, we've summoned him.
Sam joins, Sam can, Sam can, can be on stage, honestly, at this point, that's, you would be, you're always with me to work. The kid's a bit more friendly. Oh, there's a kid in the background, you can hear mine? Changing nappies now, if you didn't realize.
No, I'm just, I'm just, just happy to see the, the team and company thriving just from, from an outside now. It's, it's amazing how much it's grown, like in the last, what, ten, eleven months now, or so?
Yeah, we can say the last, the last six weeks.
Or even that, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, yeah, absolutely. We miss you every day, you know, Nikita, we love to have you back. Wink, wink. But eh. Yeah, you probably want to step elsewhere. But, but no.
I mean, you know, it's, it's. I'm, I'm not going to say it hasn't, hasn't, at least somewhere in the very back crossed my mind, but you know, let me, let me, let me do my thing for now.
Yeah, do your thing, do your thing, you're always welcome. And yeah, you're, you're going to Las Vegas by any chance next week?
Uh, no. Yeah, I know. I, I did want to ask about swag, because hospitable swag, for everyone that doesn't know, is really, really, really good, and I still have mine. I want more, how do I get more?
Which one? Oh yes, you have the, you have the black ones, right?
I have the original smart B and B.
The OG smart B and B. Nice.
Yeah. Yeah, there's going to be some new ones, there's going to be, but I think Daniel can, can talk a bit more about that, actually, about the swag that we're going to be having. So that's, there is a little bit of a reveal, are we allowed to do that? Matthew is not.
Yes, I mean, well, I, I think, I think we can give a little, little tease about what's coming. So we have some special updates coming regarding a concept that we've been working on for the past couple of months. So anyone that's coming to VRMA will get the first peek at what we've been working on. And to do with that concept, we have new swag. So we have new t-shirts that we're going to be giving out, new, new stickers that we're going to be giving out. And we're also doing a giveaway for the swag, swag boxes, the hospitable swag boxes at VRMA. So there's a lot, there's going to be a lot of stuff there, so make sure you, if you're going to VRMA, to stop by booth number two thirty-one. And, and yeah, and you'll be able to get the opportunity to grab some of that. Some of the stuff is very exclusive and limited, so it's, it's going to be, it's going to be great.
Make a, we're going to make a contest with, with Autohost swag, I hope. I'm trying to provoke Roy into, into unmuting himself, but I think he's somewhere else. Nikita?
The previous set of stickers are really looking good on my daughter's toy kitchen, I must say.
We can, we can see to, we can see to maybe ship you out some of the new ones as well, so that you can, you can have those, maybe that's something.
She will use those in, 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 in the, the most valid manner, I assure you. They won't go on a computer lap, the back of a laptop, they will go somewhere on one of her toys that will be being used in a week.
We're going to need some pictures, we're going to send out some more stickers.
There's, there's also an update that I forgot to mention, that there will also be magnets at VRMA, this was a request from previous events. That people enjoyed the stickers, but they'd also love to have magnets to stick on their fridge. So that's also something that will be, will be coming, coming to VRMA.
How do those even work?
It's.
Magnet, nobody does that joke. I'll do the work. I did, I did, nobody hears me anyway. I plan.
Alright, I think, I think you have a, you have a, you have a legit question, so I'm going to step off stage. I'm going to say it's lovely hearing your voices again, it was good to.
Kids hear from you, man.
Take care.
Alright, alrighty then, um, let's get back to the questions. So we have a question from, back on schedule, yes. So we have a question from Heather. And she's asking if there is an option in the works to attach the Airbnb guidebook, which contains the cover photo into a prepared saved message in hospitable. I can repeat that if you need me to. So she's asking about an option in the works to attach the Airbnb guidebook, which contains the cover photo into a prepared saved message in hospitable.
That's, I was going to say. So yeah, that's the. Yeah, two things, because you have the guidebooks. Typically, yeah, like the maps, pictures, contents, that's basically better to have a link.
I think, then maybe something there?
And there is the check-in instruction steps, so basically what is currently available on Airbnb for a few steps or check-in instructions. So i- in any case, there won't be attachments per se, but it would, for us, the way it would work is really a link on to Airbnb's websites. I don't think that's impossible by any means, we're just really, a lot of our hosts, for example, are relying on the ability to attach. To attach pictures as attachment to the, to the messages that are sent across Airbnb, across Verbo. I think a lot, I mean, the overwhelming majority of our users work across multiple platforms. And so doubling down feature from one, just one channel is something that may not work for, for a significant part of our customers. It's not saying that basically we should not do that, it just means probably is going to end up having a quite reduced value. Among the eight thousand, six hundred customers we're having, there really is one thousand five hundred that are exclusively on Airbnb alone. So most of them are basically across, across those different channels.
So Heather's actually asked to come up stage, so maybe we can invite her up.
That's perfect.
And I think that would be great, so there we go.
Absolutely, a lot better.
Roy also mentioned that he's trying to speak, but at the moment he's having some, he's, he's not available.
Okay. It is on it.
Hi Heather.
Hello Heather.
Hi Heather.
How can we help you? I think you need to unmute yourself.
Hello, sorry, I was trying to find the mute button.
Yeah, yeah, that's the worst product ever.
Thank you, yeah, I just, I attach it to my Airbnb messages. So after the hospitable message goes through, I go back to Airbnb and I attach the guidebook, just because it looks really nice, it has the pictures. And our guests use that a lot. So I would love if you could add that to the, to hospitable where we, we could add it, you can always add the link, it just doesn't look as nice.
Yeah, I think, we, we won't be able to, so the, the problem is that what you, what you have as an Airbnb message is basically a proprietary component. We would not be able to send the, the, the guidebook as an attachment in the same way that it's being displayed. That's only an action that's going to be valuable for you manually. So that, that's, that simply is because Airbnb did not make that feature available for the, the way that we integrate with our, with our products. Just let me ask you, what, what is the, what is this guidebook doing for you? Is it about like other destinations, other, other places to see in the world?
Yep, I'm in Colorado and I have a couple of different guidebooks. One is for hiking trails that you can go to that we recommend. And then one is just your basics of restaurants that we recommend for dinner and breakfast and things to do and nightlife and. Yeah, just stuff that we recommend. And then the other thing, I'll stop worrying, or not worrying, I'll stop wishing that it was in hospitable now. So that takes care of that, but the other thing I wanted to say was that I met with Vera. Initially, and she helped me set up all my messages, and she was awesome, so I just wanted to give a shout out to Vera.
Yep, Vera is awesome. She is listening to you, and Brian is basically very awesome too, in a different way, but Vera is awesome! I think a bit of competition between the, the two people in the sales team.
Well, thank you for what you guys do, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments either, and yeah, what, what I wanted to ask simply about the guidebooks, if I, if I may, it's really. Is there something, so the, the way, what you appreciate is basically the fact it does this kind of native feeling and experience on Airbnb? Like cards that you can scroll through, or is it just a PDF type, type of documents?
It is, I don't know what it is, it's not. It's just you go into the messages and you go to the dropdown and you can just send the guidebook. And maybe it's a link, but when, I used to add the link because they didn't have that option. But the link was just a link, you know, WWW dot blah, blah, blah. But now they have the option where you make a cover photo and I have like the Colorado cool flag. And it says Heather's guidebook, and you click that and it goes directly to their, the guidebook for you.
Yeah, to the, to the, to the message, okay, got it. I'm going to need to, to look a bit into that, that feature.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, thank you. Thanks.
Alrighty Heather, thank you for sharing, I'm going to remove you now and move you back to the. I'm gonna remove you now and move you back to the audience, that, that, not removed. As we have another person asking to come up on stage, so Kusteh is also going to be coming up now. Hi, Kusteh. You might need to unmute yourself. It's at the bottom right of the app, if you're using the app. There we go.
All right, guys, thank you very much. So, so I, I was listening in here and I'm actually in the process of creating a guidebook myself. So I, what I thought to do is to create actually like a PDF file of the guidebook and then have it on a link such as Dropbox or Google Drive. And then make it short, you know, a shortlist, right? So it'll be only a few characters. But only, only, the thing is that we can probably use that in an automatic, automated message when the people are about to check in, like maybe two days before. And letting them know that this is a guidebook for them to get more familiarized with the location. I was wondering if you think that that will be a good approach?
Yes, absolutely. That's a fantastic approach. And that's something that we see very, very often amongst our customers. That is basically, that's something that we recommend them. I think Jen would basically agree with me on this. And so we basically encourage our customers that do have a PDF version to upload it on a Dropbox folder, on a Google Drive, whatever your preference is to upload this content online. And then you can share that link to the customers within messaging rule or any, any message sent from hospitable. That link will be visible on the, on the OTAs, on Airbnb Verbo after the booking has been accepted and until the day of the checkout. There are some products that also work, like Touchday, for example, to mention one of many. But basically, they, the added value is simply that they control the access to the, to the guidebooks during the, the time of the reservation. So basically Airbnb are able to a certain degree take care of that themselves. And also definitely personalize the content, which, you know, working on a PDF, you basically would be presenting the one, the, the one guidebook for, for the same, for, for your guests. And I think that basically is, it's quite okay for, for the, for most of, of situations. So, yeah, Jose, you can do that. You can just include the link. Make sure it's obviously publicly accessible to your, to your guidebook and your, your messages.
That's excellent. Thank you very much for the info. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome, Jose. I think that's something that, to, to echo what Jen was saying is that we do have a lot of documentation around this. Definitely, that's something to, to highlight. To, because that documentation, we're talking about that kind of situation. Yeah, we have a good recommendation from Hope, that you could use also a bitly link. So bits.ly to start, to, to create a shorter link for you rather than exposing directly the, the complete drive.
All righty.
Someone wants to express myself.
Thank you very much, Jose, for your question. I will move you back to the audience now. We had, so Andrew Oakesham was wondering if you guys are hiring software engineers from the US?
As of, as of this morning, as of this morning, not anymore. I think all our engineering positions that were open are filled. Ben?
Just, just missed the boat, Andrew. By literally a couple of days, for now, anyway, for this round.
Still, go to, I think it's at, what's the, I think it's hospitable dot worktable dot com. And then you have the ability to add your CV at the bottom of that page. So that the next time we're recruiting, we can be really thinking of you first rather than, than basically having to wait for, for a job to, to become online. And you know what? We become, the company is growing always faster than we anticipated. So even though, you know, we think we're pretty settled for now. I've been proven wrong, I've, I've been proven wrong so many times. So, yeah, Andrew, go add yourself to our, to our CV pool if you, if you're interested. We'd love to talk to you.
All righty. So I think we have time for one, yep?
Yeah, no, and just to say, Ben, Ben, we did interview a software engineer that was a customer. Also, yeah, recently.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we absolutely love talking to customers, particularly when they want to join the team. So, yeah, it's always a, a big check in the box for sure.
Yeah, but there are also other checks in the box that need to be checked. Daniel?
Yes, so I think we have time for one final. So Hope was asking about the, Ben did give updates on the direct booking sites, but she might have joined later. So she was asking about any updates on the direct booking sites and any payment widget yet. So maybe Ben would be the best person just to kind of say that again on the updates there.
Yeah, no worries, yeah. Hope, yeah, so we are, there's a few things happening with Direct. We, we definitely haven't forgotten about it. We, we're doing a lot of work behind the scenes on a few different parts of Direct. So there's the templates I mentioned earlier. So if you set up a direct site, a direct booking site with hospitable at the moment, you've probably seen you've only got the choice of one template and you can customize that template, but it's still kind of one template, right? So we're doing some work on expanding that to eleven templates. A lot of different theme things coming in here, like beach themes, city themes, camping themes, stuff like that, so that you can really kind of personalize and make your site your own. So we're doing some work on, on that front. We're also, we have a payment processing pilot group running, try saying that quickly, at the moment, for people who want to have payment processing versus Stripe. So it's a pretty small group at the moment. The, and the members of that group can add their own Stripe accounts to hospitable, as Pierre was kind of talking about, and collect payments from guests as part of that, that direct booking flow. We're also doing a lot of work in the background as well to improve and, and get our direct premium offering ready to go, which is where you don't have to bring your own Stripe account and we kind of take care of a lot more things for you. There's a ton of work going on in that, on that in the background at the moment. So which, we're talking to someone, a company to help automate taxes. We're talking to another partner to help us kind of deal with the, the payment processing side of that. So, yeah, I guess the, the short version of that is, is things are moving forward. I don't have any hard dates to share with you right now. But templates should be the first thing coming pretty soon. And I think it's okay to share that we've, we've shared this before, so I'm pretty sure it's fine. We're still really targeting the end of this year for a, a kind of true go-live of Direct with payment processing. So it, it's definitely on the radar. And, yeah, as I mentioned as well, we've, we've onboarded four engineers. At least two of those are gonna be working a lot on Direct. We've got Andrew, who's our product manager, working on Direct now as well. So, yeah, a lot more people working on it. Things are gonna start to move quicker. And, yeah, we should, we should have more stuff to, to share with you in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Ben. That's fantastic. That's, unfortunately, that's all the time we have for today. So we will take into account your questions for next time, but make sure to come again and ask them again. And you are free to get in touch with the support team if you have any questions as well, I'm sure. So thank you very much for joining and I'll let PC give the final words.
All right. Send off. Thank you very much for attending. We've been running a little bit of an experiment. I hope this one was working for the marketing of this one event. Thank you for attending with us. We hope to meet some of you, all, all of you. We hope to meet, oh my God, this is so awkward. We hope to meet you at Las Vegas next, this weekend. And next, early next week. And we're really looking forward.
Twenty-third of the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, I honestly don't know about the dates anymore. Yeah, I have to leave you, I need to be taking care of this baby now. Thank you very much, have a great evening from Brussels. Ciao, ciao.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.